Called meeting to order. And with that, if you'll please rise for the invocation from Supervisor Bishop and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance Supervisor Angus.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today to give honor and praise. We ask, we thank you for our great country and we ask your divine wisdom for all of our leaders here today. May we be given the wisdom and courage in the decisions that we make. We ask that you guide and direct our meeting this morning so that it's full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. We thank you for the accomplishments of reaching our goals. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Bishop, Supervisor Angus. The Board of Supervisors made by motion go recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the Board's attorney on any item contained on this agenda pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes 38-431.03, portions A3 and 4. Look for a motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on December 18th at 2017 at nine o'clock for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with Arizona Revised Statutes to discuss items noticed on the agenda within asterisk.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Onto official business. Mr. Epsom, any items on your agenda?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Committee and legislative reports will start to my left Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had some meetings of the RITS, the recovery implementation teams for the Upper Virgin River, the California, and the Northeast Mojave. On Upper Virgin River, discussion revolved around fire management planning implementation, which is a high priority. Utah Bureau of Land Management will not implement fuel breaks using herbicide or clearing of natural vegetation. Proactive fire risk management, brom triage mapping, prioritizing areas for treatment, prevention looking at green striping, brown striping, herbicide treatments, biotreatments, the five fingers of death fungus not commercially available, and other problems, bacterial agents, and the need for input from fire experts when they were looking for best approaches, new information, data, and methods. And they proposed a symposium regarding fire management next year, possibly in Vegas. They've been addressing habitat restoration, which is a high priority. They need an experimental element to evaluate the success, collecting data using metrics such as plant survival, percent of cover, and community composition. Education remains an ongoing high priority, visitor services, schools, fairs, other events and social media. Predator management, medium priority, needs to be proactive rather than reactive, targeted control, garbage and landfills, develop a Raven management plan for the Red Cliffs. Fencing's a high priority, Zone Four, Leeds area. Maintenance is a big issue, needs a proactive strategy. Interns can walk fences and document condition. Some fences need to be updated to fish and wildlife. Manual standards, community groups such as Boy Scouts, et cetera, could do some maintenance. Land acquisition is a high priority and the content of consistent land management. Disease management is not a practical recovery action. They can manage other factors that may contribute to impacts of disease such as habitat, quality, translocation, planning. No new priorities need to be added. Other issues or priorities that were identified, increase the Desert Tortoise Management Oversight Group disparity among the RITS in terms of how funding is generated, and central source of funding, adaptive management approach to reassess the MOG and the RIT priorities through providing feedback. I have some other summaries of it if anybody's interested, they can give with me after the meeting.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. I believe you're the, our member on the Colorado River Multispecies?
Yes, we have Bill Lamb from Quad State sets on that for us.
Okay, great. I understand that they've found what they thought was an extinct species, and that's the Mexican garter snake in the Willow Williams River?
Yes, they have. Just what we needed. It was probably planted there.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you Chairman Watson. Just wanted to say that Arizona holds the distinction of being the first state in the country where every county passed a resolution in support of the stepping up initiative, and Mojave County, of course, was one of those. So last week I traveled to Maricopa County to attend the first NACO stepping up peer exchange. The county elected officials and staff from across the country attended this. The stepping up initiative was established back in 2015 to help advance efforts to reduce the number of adults with mental illness and co-occurring substance use disorders in our county jails, which I'm sure our sheriff is well aware of. This two-day peer exchange explored a variety of issues and arenas, including the development of Maricopa County's reform efforts, including the program at Connections Arizona, the Urgent Psychiatric Care Center, programming to arm law enforcement with goals to combat mental illness on the streets, as well as assessment tools to identify diversion potential. And then we went into the opioid crisis, of course, in our attempts to reduce recidivism in our county jails. So it was a very interesting and productive two days in Phoenix.
Thank you Supervisor Bishop. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. I wasn't going to bring this up, but since Supervisor Bishop talked about the opioid crisis, we've put together a committee in Bullhead City, and we, we are actually have everything necessary to open up a detox center, but our startup money. We have the building, we have the provider, we have the doctors, we have hopes of funding. So we went down and we spoke to the governor's office. There's been a lot in the news lately targeting Mojave County, some fair, some unfair. We tried to set the record straight. They apologized on some things, but they, they say they do understand Mojave County's needs. I believe them. And they said they will step up and help us as much as they can. And I am doing everything I can do within Mojave County to find money to get this much needed facility that would service the entire Mojave County. Like I said, it's located on a bus route in Bullhead City in a, in a zoned area. We'll have to go through that, in a correctly zoned area. And I'm very excited, and I'm putting it out there. If anybody has ideas, I am open to hearing everything. The target we are looking at is to get this thing up and going is $620,000. And then we have other money coming in for programming. You know how it goes at the government, everything has its, it's saying we've got money for programming, but we need just money to build out this facility. So again, if anyone has ideas, I would appreciate hearing them. Thank you.
Thanks Supervisor Angus. Supervisor Wacamodo, report?
We've met with a variety of people down in the Bullhead area and Lake Havasu about the water issues and, and have gotten a tremendous amount of support from a variety of agencies. And looking forward to having a resolution drafted to the MVIDD Board to ask them not to change their resolution to allow water to leave this county.
Thank you. And I have a short report this morning. Supervisor Bishop and I will be attending the Western Congressional Caucus in Las Vegas on Saturday. The issue that we'll be presenting is the borough population and devastation to Mojave County. Okay, on to County Administrator's Report.
I have no report today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. There are currently no minutes available ready for approval, so we'll go on to call to the public. Those wishing to address the Board of the Call to the Public regarding matters not on the Board Agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak for them. Those are located in the back room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of the public comments will be limited to responding to the criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of this board.
Stephen Robinson, 3967 North Mormon Flat Road, at least it will be in about a month. Here are facts about county management of GVID that make people ask questions. First, in 1990, when the system was being constructed, the county said there were 5,010 allocations, just 21 more than the existing parcels. One year later, based on state estimates of 1,400 acre foot of water, the number was increased to 6,200. The official policy states people use 200 gallons per day. Four, in fact, the average is 160 gallons per day, which means there should be 7,800 allocations or hookups. Five, in 1994, the county requested a designation of adequate water supply from the ADWR to confirm the 1,400 acre feet. It's, that's something for municipal providers. Six, their July 95 decision stated that there was enough money to meet the county's estimated 100-year demand plus 950 acre feet of water in excess of that figure. I never found any evidence that this number was ever made public. Seven, that means there are 13,000 allocations available, over double the official count. Instead of 442 currently for sale, there should be 7,300 hookups right now. Based on that misinformation, the Board stopped all development in June of 2006. They tripled the cost of an allocation to the current price of about $1,600. It wants to triple it again to 5,200. Nine, but GVID did sell 200 allocations to developers just days before that vote at a much lower price of 475, even though the land only entitled them to buy five or six allocations. Ten, finally, in 2013, the USGS estimate of 28.4 million acre feet of water tripled ADWR's 2008 estimate. That means there is much more water in that valley, in that area, than the county has ever acknowledged. But planning and zoning continues to act like there's no more water, stating that in the 2002 Golden Valley Area Plan. When you take all these facts together and many more, there's an established pattern of not being fully disclosing of the facts to, to the public, to the people in that district. That's why the people in Golden Valley should have their own board focused on their own concerns and elected by them. The Board would not tolerate those actions that we've had seen. Here's a copy of that decision from 1995.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. In front of you, you should each have a small package.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. My name is Carmen Johnson, 1162 South Drake, City of Golden Valley, Arizona. As I stated in front of you, each of you should have a small package that expresses my opinions on both the GVID and also on the quality of work I see coming out of the county. I'm very disappointed, and if I had done a tenth of the mistakes I've noticed, I would have been fired. Supervisor Bishop was gracious enough to correct, correct a problem that I know has been going on for two years. I did have a little speech here about the GVID, which I'm totally against. The questions that Mr. Robinson stated were of concern to the citizens is not exactly correct. What we are concerned about are the base costs of the takeover. What would happen if the takeover failed? Would you take control back of the district, which I've been told legally you do not have to? That would essentially, should something happen, the district lose money, no longer be able to function. If the machinery and the wells broke down, we would have several of our constituents with no water. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning Supervisors. My name is Katie Manning. I live at 3941 East Ames Avenue here in Kingman. My concern is when this room is very full, your mics are out here and not directly within six inches of your mouth. It is very, very difficult for us that are sitting 50 feet away at the back of the room to hear each one of you speak. And when you lean back in your chair, can you hear me? We can't hear you when you lean back in your chair. So it would just be really well appreciated by your constituents that when you're talking to each other, the microphone goes with you. Thank you. Good morning and have a happy holiday.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you for your suggestion. Okay, this morning we have a presentation of the litter detail statistics by Doug Schuster, Mojave County Sheriff. Morning Sheriff.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the Board, Mr. Epsom, Mr. Hendricks, of course, our clerk. I'm going to give a brief recap of the litter detail we did, but before I do so, I don't believe I'll be able to make next, the next BOS meeting, so I wanted to wish you all a very Merry Christmas, as well as those in the audience and those listening at home. Happy, healthy New Year for all of you. As you may recall, I just, I feel like I just, I better get closer to the microphone. As you may recall, back in June of this year, we came to the Board, we had some salary savings. We asked that that money be transferred into a fund that we could use to do some off-duty work for a litter detail to see how well we could deal with the problems that were being addressed, are being brought to our attention. I was hoping Mr. Hollins would be here today. I know he was interested in this recap, but it's available. So we ran the detail from May 6th through June 23rd, roughly six weeks. During that time, we generated 233 reports. So basically 233 dump sites were recognized, they were recorded. Out of those 233, we made a total of 16 arrests. Five have gone to warrant, so we have eight additional active cases. I think we have certainly identified that there is a problem here in Mojave County. I don't believe this is going to be a quick fix. We're looking at other measures we can do in the upcoming years to try and combat more of this, but I think overall the detail was a success. I think locating these dumps, you know, that's one thing, being able to remove the trash is another, and that's something we're not equipped for, so maybe something we can address in the future. So that is a very brief recap. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for the Sheriff? Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you Chairman Watson. Of these 233 reports, were these reports on sites that had already been investigated by the ERACE, or did you cross-check those?
I don't know if we cross-checked. Out of the 233, they were all self-initiated, meaning it's possible that ERACE had knowledge of some of them. We were active in the deserts looking for dumping and process, and in the interim, we came across several sites that were, you know, identified, and I don't know if we cross-referenced them honestly.
Okay. And then of the 16 arrests, were they site and release type arrests?
I don't have that information. I would assume probably site and release.
Okay. Do you have any idea whether or not the county attorney is proceeding with charges on, on these?
I don't have that information. I can find out and get that to you.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be very interested in knowing that. And you said that five have gone to warrant, so obviously those five did go through the county attorney's office and charges were authorized.
Correct.
And then you have eight additional cases. Were those new cases that were called into you or self-initiated?
These were cases out of the original detail. This information came to me about a month ago, so I don't know if those cases have been resolved. I tried getting that information this morning, so I'm just pointing out that there was follow-up that was necessary on those eight cases. They were not cut and dry cases.
Well, I appreciate the, the detail that you did, and the numbers speak for themselves. If I could get something in writing so that I'll, I'll have that reference material, I would appreciate it. And I think we're going to be speaking to our ERACE detectives, seeing if we can tighten this program up a little bit more and, and working in conjunction with the Sheriff's Office, maybe we can do a little bit more towards stopping this atrocious dumping in our, in our public lands and our deserts.
Yes, ma'am. We'll get you that information, and I concur. I think it's a tragedy. We have such beautiful deserts, and any road you take anymore is just cluttered, and something needs to be done. The Sheriff's Department will do, you know, as much as we can, and we appreciate the partnership.
I agree. I think if there's probable cause, we should site and release and also encourage them to clean up the trash that has been dumped and, and let the judge recognize that a good effort was made on their part to right a wrong, if that's what's determined by a court of law. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Johnson?
I just want to disagree with Supervisor Bishop. I believe that citing them and making them clean it up and still fighting them is the best way to go, because that really instills in them the fact that they won't do it again.
I wouldn't be opposed to that either Supervisor Johnson. I just want it to stop.
Any further comments from the Board? Sheriff Schuster, thank you very much for your report and your detail on this. As you know, this is a very important subject for the entire Board and for you too, I'm sure. And after this afternoon's meeting with the ERACE people, hopefully we can put together another joint project to really get after this problem. But Mojave County suffers tremendously by this blight, and I tell you what, if we can do anything to make sure that we get convictions when we go to court, to make these people aware that they're going to go to jail. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a Board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. This morning, I've been asked by the Recorder's Office to pull item 16 for no action because there needs to be a revision on that. Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Bishop?
I have nothing this morning.
Supervisor Angus?
Nothing this morning.
Supervisor Wacamodo?
Nothing.
Then we'll just have item number 16.
Chairman Watson, make a motion to approve consent agenda items number five to 19, accept number, what did we say, 16?
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carried, consent agenda. And item 16 will require no action. So we'll move on to public hearings. Item number 20, I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Resolution Number 2017-155 for the amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from light industrial planned unit development to an rural development area and land use designation. And an amendment to the Dutch Flat Area Plan from the planned unit development land use designation to a rural development area land use designation. That's for parcel number 243-19-011 in the Yucca vicinity. We have, Mr. Walsh, do you have any, anything you'd like to add this morning?
Nothing to add, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Walsh? And I have no one signed up to speak to item number 20, so I'll close the public hearing for item number 20.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve item 20.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second for the adoption of item 20. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. I'll open the public hearing for item number 21. Discussion, possible action, adoption of the Board Resolution Number 2017-156 for assessor parcel number 243-19-011, agricultural residential 36 acre minimum to an agricultural residential 18 acre minimum to allow for a minor land use division in the Yucca vicinity. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one signed up to speak to item number 21. Any questions to Mr. Walsh? I'll close the public hearing for item number 21.
Motion to approve item 21.
Motion?
Second.
And second to, for the adoption of item 21. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number 22, we'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2017-157, an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from high-density residential land use designation to general commercial land use designation for parcel number 324-10-236 in the Kingman vicinity. This is on the northeast corner of Willow Road and Gordon Drive. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one signed up to speak to item number 22.
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor, Supervisor Bishop?
Make a motion that we approve Board of Supervisors Resolution 2017-157.
After I close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. As noted, close the public hearing. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item 23, I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action on Board Resolution That's a rezone of parcel number 324-10-236 from a multiple-family residential one acre to general commercial zone to allow for the business office and a cabinet shop in the Kingman vicinity on the northeast corner of Willow Road and Gordon Drive in Mojave County. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one wishing to speak to item number 23, so I will close the public hearing.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion to approve Board Resolution Number 2017-158.
We have a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 24, open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board- possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2017-159, the amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from light industrial land use to heavy industrial land use designation for assessors parcel number 310-18-008 in the Kingman vicinity. That's east of Bruce Drive and on Grossman in Mojave County. I believe that's north and east of the airport. I have one person that would like to speak to that item. Kent Pearson?
I'm the applicant, and I would answer questions if you have any.
If you'll please give us your name and address for the...
Kent Pearson, 14209 North Ashbrook Drive, Fountain Hills, Arizona.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any question for Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I'll check one more time. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to item number 24? There being none, I'll close the public hearing for item number 24.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion to approve Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2017-159.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Onto item number 25. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2017-160 for the rezone of assessors parcel number 310-18-008 from Airport Development Zone to General Manufacturing Zone to allow for a vehicle wrecking yard and junkyard in the Kingman vicinity, east of Bruce Drive and on Grossman Road in Mojave County. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved with unanimous vote. Again, we have Mr. Pearson signed up, but if you wish not to speak, that's fine. Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 25? There being none, we'll close the public hearing for item number 25.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-160.
We have a motion? And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Onto item number 26. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2017-161. That's the amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from light industrial land use to designation to the heavy industrial land use designation for assessors parcel number 310-18-10... I'm sorry, 010. That's in the Kingman vicinity, east of Bruce Drive, on Grossman Drive in Mojave County. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one else other than the applicant wishing to speak. So we will close the public hearing.
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-161.
Thank you. We have a motion for the approval of item 26. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Open the public hearing for item number 27. That's for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2017-162, a rezone of assessors parcel number 310-18-010 from Airport Development Zone to General Manufacturing Zone to allow for a vehicle wrecking yard and junkyard in the Kingman vicinity. This was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning by unanimous vote. I have the applicant wishing to speak. If there's no one else wishing to speak, bring a discussion. I'll close the public hearing.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-162.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of item number 27. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Item number 28, I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for Board Resolution 2017-163 for parcel number 324-10-352 for... from multiple-family residential to 20,000 square feet minimum lot size to multi-family residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Kingman vicinity. That's west of Bank Street on Gordon Drive. Commission... Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for unanimous vote. I have no one signed up for item number 28, so I'll close the public hearing.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion to approve Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2017-163.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Onto item 29. I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2017-164, amendment to the Mojave County General Plan, and that's from a low-density commercial land use designation in the Kingman vicinity on northeast corner of Gordon Drive on Lamita Street in Mojave County, Arizona. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one wishing to speak to item number 29, so I'll close the public hearing.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-164.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried unanimously. Onto item number 30. Open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2017-165, a rezone of assessors parcel number 324-10-262B. And that's from multiple-family residential one acre to general commercial zone to allow for a restaurant in the Kingman vicinity. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I have no one signed up to speak to item number 30. I will ask the audience, is there anyone wishing to speak to item number 30? There being none? I'm sorry?
Oh, I was just asking.
Okay. There being none, then I'll close the public hearing for item number 30.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-165.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second for item number 30. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, a motion carried unanimously. Onto item number 31. Mr. Lautowski, this is... I'll open the public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Board Resolution 2017-167, excepting commercial... I'm sorry, Commerce Way from Mojave Airport Drive to Bonanza Way, Columbus Way from Commerce Lane to Railroad Drive, Railroad Drive from Bonanza Way for 800 feet north, Bonanza Way from Shipping Lane to Railroad Drive, and Industrial Boulevard from Santa Fe Drive to 940 feet south totaling 1.60 miles into the Mojave County regular maintenance program as paved roadways. I have only one person wanting to speak to that item, and that's Carmen Johnson. Ms. Johnson, if you care to speak to this item?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Carmen Johnson, 1162 South Drake, Golden Valley, Arizona. As a rule, I disagree with Supervisor Johnson's decisions more than I do Supervisor Bishop's. But in this case, I'm going to have to agree with him on item 31. I am in... not in favor of it. We have more roads that need taken care of. If you travel from Kingman down through Golden Valley and go through the pass, if you're in the outside lane, those lanes are so bad, they'll shake the... work brain. They'll shake the suspension right out from under your car. We have chinnerum that still needs to be paved. We have several other roads. We have roads that people are not able to get out of their homes after a storm. Those need to be taken care of. We don't need to take care of roads that are in somebody else's position right now, possession. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 31? I'll close the public hearing for item number 31.
Mr. Chairman, I did... somebody had sent me an email. I thought they'd sent it to the board in objection. Two, I can read it if you want. Did the clerk get it?
Yes, actually, it was received, it looks like, late, late last night. So it is not in backup, because it was received after our cutoff time, but I can forward it to you all.
Would that be the response from... different one? Okay, so...
Chairman Watson?
Let it be known before I close the public hearing that there were two respondents in opposition. Supervisor Bishop?
I just wanted to say I'd be interested in hearing what the email had in opposition. If Supervisor Johnson could read that.
Or if we could have the clerk.
If you think it's related.
This is from Mr. Peter Van Bagen. This email is to formally notify you that as a Mojave County resident and taxpayer, I object to the county expending any further funds to maintain three sections of roadways or any roadways within the Kingman Airport Industrial Park, which are owned by the City of Kingman and leased to the Kingman Airport Authority. In the past, improvements have been made and funded by Mojave County with funds illegally taken from the HERF funds and must stop. Please present this letter as my objection to the upcoming meeting. Sincerely, Peter J. Van Bagen, 2051 Cabana Drive, Lake Havasu City.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson.
Chairman Watson, what is the county's response to that? That is, the Airport Authority that leased from the city. So why is it the county's responsibility?
Well, I can have Steve Lautowski explain to you what our responsibility is, and I will in just a minute. The only thing that I would like to add to that is that in that area of about two square miles, over 40% of our general tax collections come from that area. So it's a very important economic area for us to recognize, and that's one of the reasons why I've taken it upon to enhance the industrial park through the roadway issue, and further try to develop that infrastructure for economic development. Now, to answer your question, we'll have Steve Lautowski answer the legality of that. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Good morning Supervisor Johnson, members of the board, Supervisor Angus. The roadways serving the Kingman Industrial Airport Park, including the airport, lie within the unincorporated area of Mojave County. As a result, given that they are not within the City of Kingman limits, even though there's a relationship between the Airport Authority and the city, any roadways contemplated for public maintenance would result in falling to the county. And as a result, with these roads lying within the unincorporated area, we are allowed, per board acceptance, to maintain and expand HERF funds on the maintenance and operation of those roads accepted by the Board of Supervisors.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson?
Mr. Lautowski, this Kingman Air Park is similar and set up the same as the Bullhead Airport, correct? It's a private organization that... because the county created the Bullhead Airport by giving it to them and giving them their own autonomy. We gave... the county gave the City of Kingman this air park, and then they gave it to a private organization similar to Bullhead City. And I think the difference that Supervisor Angus will see is that when Bullhead sold their properties and brought in businesses, they used that money to improve their park. Kingman, what you see in the papers, is obviously having a disagreement with their air park authority. Millions of dollars worth of land's been sold and no roads have been fixed or anything else, and it's coming back on the taxpayers. That's why I'm against it.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson. Any further questions for Mr. Lautowski?
And what is the dollar figure for this?
This particular petition, which was advanced by the Airport Authority, entails acceptance of 1.6 miles of roadway. I'd like to represent a couple of things. One, staff has inspected these roads and do find that they are laid out and completed to county standards. However, there has been some time that has passed since the Airport Authority has improved these roadways. I believe it was about three to four years ago that these roadways were improved. And as a result, they do demand some maintenance attention as it relates to preventive maintenance, a crack seal, if you will. And staff has estimated that to be about $72,000 for the 1.2... 1.6 miles of roadway. Last bit of information I'd like to convey from staff is we have discovered that there's a short section of Bonanza Way from Shipping Lane to Commerce Drive that only has 16 feet of right-of-way, which is insufficient. This was an oversight that we have communicated now with the City of Kingman and the Airport Authority. They're city property abutting Bonanza Drive, and the city has pledged to rectify this immediately. And we would recommend to staff that the board consider accepting that section for maintenance upon the city Airport Authority acting on perfecting that right-of-way. I understand that they're working on it right now.
Thank you, Ms. Lautowski. Any further questions?
So that is the city's contribution? And is that right-of-way? So, for what? I'm confused.
Yes. Supervisor Angus, the City of Kingman has a budding property to ship to Bonanza Way, and what we found was that there was inadequate right-of-way. We had anticipated that there was a dedication of right-of-way that was planned to have occurred in the past, just hasn't been executed by the council, and the city is moving toward presenting that to council for consideration.
Okay.
I would not necessarily look at it as being a contribution to this petition, but nonetheless a housekeeping item that needs to be completed.
Is the City of Kingman contributing any money to this?
Supervisor Angus? No. Mr. Chairman, may I weigh in on this just briefly? I know Steve said it, but I want to say it very clear. These roads were constructed to county standard at no cost to the county by others who are wishing these roads to be accepted for maintenance. Just to clarify that, so that the county hasn't been involved in the design or the construction of these roadways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Anything further for Mr. Lautowski?
I have a couple of questions.
Supervisor Bishop?
I... just a statement first and then a question. I liken this to our financial incentive that we gave to DOT Foods last year. It brings tax dollars to the county, and I do want to promote economic development. And if paving these roads is going to bring more economic development to the Kingman Airport, it benefits Mojave County, and I see that as a plus. And if more trucks are coming in based on new manufacturing or businesses, that's more HERF dollars for Mojave County. But I did have a question as to whether or not the Airport Authority or the City of Kingman is assisting in any way with these roads, not just the ones we're considering today, but all of the roads that the county maintains. Does the Airport Authority do any maintenance, or does the City of Kingman help with equipment or materials or anything of that matter?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop, the City of Kingman or the Airport Authority has made contributions toward the maintenance of other roadways within the air park itself that are maintained by the county, as well as there were no contributions, financial or otherwise, that... financial or otherwise, uh, that accompanied this petition for acceptance for maintenance. I may also clarify that these roads are already paved, they're, they're already hard-surfaced. So they're just exhibiting a, a level of distress, of surface distresses, that warrant attention to, uh, preventive maintenance treatments such as a chip seal somewhat in the near term.
Okay. Um, actually, um, I saw that Bob Riley just walked into the room, so, um, I'd like to get a little input from, from him as well.
Mr. Riley, if you'll proceed to the podium. Thank you, Mr. Lutowski.
So, Mr. Riley, what can the airport authority do to assist financially or physically, or, um, what, what will paving these roads do to help our, um, tax base and our economic development out there? Just all those questions in, uh, one paragraph.
Chairman Supervisor, or Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop, um, these roads were constructed by the airport authority. Uh, they have been constructed for a number of years. We have just not gotten around to getting them into the county system for maintenance. As far as the economic development, um, there's over four million square feet of developed space within the industrial park in Kingman. It generates to Mojave County approximately five hundred thousand dollars a year in, in, uh, tax revenue. And I can break down the rest of the districts as well, but the, the general fund tax revenue that comes to the county is about just right around five hundred thousand dollars a year. Roads are extremely important to the tenants at the industrial park. This is a little bit different situation than most of the retail spaces within the area because we're moving heavy trucks and, and materials. So roads are critical. They're designed to industrial standards, they have a, a thicker base, they have more asphalt. Um, it's, uh, something that we do as part of the sales of the property out there, and we are requesting that these be included for maintenance within the, the county system.
So, Mr. Riley, was this the, the, the plan all along, when you built these roads, that you would then request that the county maintain them? And as you said, you just never got around to doing that? But you should have?
We should have. When we designed the roads, we brought the plans and specs into the county for review. And we designed the roads again to, to industrial standards, which are a little bit more stringent than the standard county road standards. Um, so these are well-developed streets.
And if the county doesn't step up and bring these into our maintenance, um, system, uh, what are your projections? What, what would you do if, if we gave you a, a no today? And that's very possible, but what, what would be the result of a no vote today?
In the almost forty years that we've maintained the, the airport industrial park, what we have found that if the county does not maintain the roads, uh, it goes until the point where they're deteriorated to the point where they can't be used, and we attempt to get federal money to rebuild the road and put it back in the system.
Does the airport authority have any funding that could, where you could partner with the county, uh, to help maintain these roads and bring them up to the original standard where it was intended to ask us to take them over at that point?
Uh, as far as roads go, we do not. Our funds are earmarked for airport side improvements, the, uh, the industrial park side improvements. We can make improvements at the beginning, but we can't maintain them under our, our current guidelines with our, uh, federal mandates.
Okay. And that's the reason why you were going to ask us to maintain them when they were first built?
Correct.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Riley?
Yeah, can you repeat that last statement? Did you just say that you can't maintain them because of federal mandates?
We are not in a position to maintain public roadways. Uh, our federal mandates are such that, uh, as we develop the industrial park, as we sell property within the industrial park, the net proceeds of the land sale, and when I say net proceeds, we can take the physical improvements for roadways, water improvements, sewer improvements, out of the land sales and put them into that infrastructure. But once that net value is determined, that net value must be reinvested into airport side, runways, taxiways, ramps, runway lighting, within five years of the date of the sale. So our mandates from the federal government in releasing the property to allow us to sell it require us to take the net proceeds, put it back into the airport, not the industrial park.
So, in the, in the past, how, how have you done it? And is this just the beginning? I mean, how mu, how many roadways? I mean, it's a big park. Is this something that you're going to be coming back to the county in the future?
Supervisor Angus, yes, periodically, we will come back. Uh, in the past, what we have done is we have leveraged all our dollars, as much as we can, against, uh, grants and aids to develop roadways. Um, Mojave Airport Drive was, was developed through a grant, and Interstate was developed through a grant. When we get over into the lands that, or into the roadways that we're requesting to be accepted, we've developed those streets through land sales. Uh, the Cantex Construction, the, um, Johnson Manley Building, things of this nature. They were the improvements that allowed us to build these streets that we're requesting to be, uh, accepted into the system.
And that's the same for all the airport authorities? Because I don't remember Bullhead coming and asking us to do these kinds of things.
The airport authority in Bullhead is situated a little bit different than we were, or are, uh, even though we were originally part of that system. Um, their improvements are being made, uh, to the retail side and not as much into the industrial park. The industrial park is not part of the airport in Bullhead.
Hmm, yes it is. Yes, it is. So there is never, there was never any money put aside for maintenance of roads, ever?
No. The airport authority does not have a road department.
Mr. Riley, what does the, uh, agency do as far as cleaning up the right-of-ways?
We will do some maintenance to the right-of-ways. Uh, we try to mow, uh, some weeds occasionally, uh, when, when equipment's available. Uh, we will patch some potholes as needed, uh, although we, uh, we rely on the county for, for major work. We do as much as we can, but we have very limited staff, we have very limited equipment.
Right, I understand that. But I do know that, uh, from time to time that you have people out mowing those right-of-ways, cleaning them up.
And occasionally, we'll get the, uh, uh, community work crew out of the prison, and we'll have the right-of-ways cleaned up with, with their assistance.
Right. You might want to explain the difference of the revenue structure between the Kingman Airport Authority and the, the Bullhead Air Park, being one that, the Bullhead Air Park is predominantly operated through revenues from the retail, is that retail leases, I believe?
I believe, although I haven't been involved with the, their revenues in a while, but the, the land that was originally the Bullhead, uh, Airport is now developed with a number of, of retail centers. And the, the money generator from that is reinvested into the airport improvements. Bullhead's operations are a little bit different than Kingman's operations in that Bullhead Airport, uh, has been more of a, uh, air service airport with air traffic activities. Uh, primarily charter, up until the American Airlines, and we'll go back into charter after February. Uh, Kingman had air service, uh, we lost it because the, uh, uh, community didn't support it, we couldn't get the, the ridership up. So we're primarily a general aviation airport. The interesting part about our, our revenue at Kingman is that when the economy is good, the industrial park thrives, we're able to make land sales, we're able to reinvest into capital improvements. When the aviation is poor, or when the economy is poor, aviation is, uh, not in terms of ridership, but in terms of parked aircraft. So we're able to generate some revenue out of the airplanes that are currently parked in, in Kingman. Bullhead City does not have that type of revenue that we generate. So we have a balance in the industrial park and the, and the airfield. Uh, Bullhead City has the airfield and their retail operations.
Correct. And the Kingman Airport Industrial Area has basically the leased areas for, for plane parking.
We do.
And I believe that's in a neighborhood of around fifty-five thousand dollars a month?
Uh, yes, it fluctuates.
But it's, it's fairly stable, but it's not a huge amount of money, and that's, from those revenues, you run the entire staff. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
So, we're in a, in a kind of a catch-twenty-two situation. At, at our airport here in Kingman, we can, we can build the roads, get them up to specification, but we can't maintain them, and that's the issue. Anyone else wishing to speak to item number thirty, thirty-one?
If we approve today this, how many more are, are going to come our way?
Um, in the immediate future, uh, I don't think any of them will come your way within the next three to five years. As we start to develop to the south, uh, there's a good possibility that we will come back with, uh, two or three more miles.
And, Mr. Riley, if you were to develop to the south, that would require release of more land from the FAA, is that correct?
Chairman Watson, the, uh, the FAA has released eleven hundred acres of land, which we consider to be the industrial park. The airport authority manages four thousand acres of land, of which one thousand acres are approximately the airport. So we have land that we will be expanding into both airfield operations and both industrial park operations. We anticipate somewhere in the vicinity of a thousand to twelve hundred acres for future industrial development. It's taken us thirty years to absorb eleven hundred acres of land. So we're anticipating that it'll be another twenty years before we can develop out that, that additional twelve hundred acres to the south.
Does that answer your questions, Supervisor Angus? Kind of?
Mr. Chairman, I have a, just twenty years ago, in a building smaller than this, you and I had these same, same discussions, uh, on the roads. Uh, Supervisor Angus was asking about how many more roads we're going to take in. One of the things that the county usually does is we take in roads that are up to standards. We don't take in roads we have to put money into, and, um, that's all I wanted to clarify.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson.
I have one more question of Mr. Riley.
Supervisor Bishop.
Can you, uh, can you tell us potential, the potential estimate of the vacant property and, um, the potential growth in the areas that we're discussing here today?
Supervisor Bishop, there are approximately one hundred and ten acres left within the original eleven hundred acres for the industrial park. And those are primarily to the north, and they will be primarily serviced by Shipping Lane, which is already adopted as a, as a county right-of-way, um, for maintenance. We may extend railroad, um, but again, that would be dependent on the, the type of use that we, um, deal with in the future.
So if we decide to maintain these roads, will more than likely have the potential of keeping the, um, industry that we have there happier, so that they don't leave and go somewhere else? But we also have the potential to bring in more businesses which will be traversing these, these roads, I'm assuming?
Supervisor Bishop, that's correct. If, um, uh, I believe Supervisor Johnson and maybe Supervisor Watson were the, the only two members that were here when we did the, uh, the B-three study, the business retention study. And the number one issue of all the plant managers out there were the conditions of the roads.
Okay, and then, uh...
So business retention is, is critical.
Okay, and then the, uh, the potential for the new interchange, the rattlesnake crossing, whatever we're calling it, is, uh, is going to bring in more traffic off from I-40 or I-11 into the industrial park? And do you foresee that bringing, uh, a lot of growth to the industrial park as far as new business?
Supervisor Bishop, that certainly has the potential to, to open up that south end. It's still going to be contingent upon the FAA's ability to release that land to us. And we've been working on the release for, uh, a little over ten years. We're, uh, we're held up in the environmental impact analysis portion of it.
Okay, that's all the questions I have, and, and my, my thoughts are if, if the industrial park grows, and I have no reason to believe that it won't with everything that's going on in the Kingman area right now, uh, that brings in more tax dollars, more HERF dollars, more money so that we can, uh, maybe look at Golden Valley roads and get a few more paved out there, as well as Chloride, Dolan, White Hills, uh, Oatman, well, no, maybe not Oatman right now, but, you know, all the communities that District Four serves, I think, are, are wanting their roads paved desperately as well. So I, I did want to recognize that, um, I, I understand, and if this helps in the long run, I think I could support it.
I have one more question. So in all these years, when we were in here, so when you sell land or these companies, there's, there's never been, um, an account set aside for the upkeep of the, since this was, by your admission, the number one, um, um, problem or fear for the, for the companies that move there? That you didn't think ahead that one day we're going to have to have this thing, and so you, there wasn't money put aside? Or will there be?
Supervisor Angus, the, the, the primary road structure had been accepted into the county system for maintenance. So we were developing within that original system. We have now expanded that system, and we are adding new roads. So we needed to come back to get them into the, uh, the county maintenance. As far as the original, um, governance of the airport authority, uh, our decisions were based upon utilizing proceeds from the land sales to develop the infrastructure rather than utilizing, um, improvement, uh, districts. And if we had considered an improvement district, we might have put a maintenance portion into it, but we didn't. We, we just built the upfront costs into the land sales.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. Riley?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'll close the public hearing for item number thirty-one.
Chairman Watson, if I might, for just a moment?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry to interrupt you. I get extremely nervous when I get up here and speak. My name is Carmen Johnson, eleven sixty-two South Drake. Uh, if you will examine the, um, paperwork attached to your little pamphlet for the backup paperwork for, uh, this agenda item, you will notice that this particular part of the hearing was not necessary, as the paperwork reflects that you've already listened to, nobody objected, and you have accepted this into fact. That goes along with what I was saying about people doing their jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe Carmen's referring to, uh, the written resolution as it would be approved by the board, should we approve it? If we don't approve it, then, uh, then this resolution, of course, goes away. This is a formality that I think we do on, on, uh, everything.
I believe that to be correct.
On any other, uh, backup?
So, Mr. Hendrix, can, can you confirm that as our...
Oh, it's, uh, no good deed goes unpunished. You know, uh, efficiency, uh, I'm sure in staff's computer, they also have, or they can change very quickly, whatever the board decides. If you notice that that resolution isn't signed, so no decision has been made. Basically, uh, it's a template, and it's utilized as a placeholder for this particular item, and if the board chooses not to accept it, that stands, that decision would stand. And I believe we're going to continue to, to do that in the future also, uh, so that you all have, will have some sort of a representation on what document you'll be contemplating.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrix. Before I close the public hearing, I'd like to make one comment, and that's the importance of keeping, uh, our industrial area in the Kingdom of the City facility looking as, uh, as proper, prosperous as we can is very important. You only get one chance to make a first impression. And I know when we're selling, uh, properties for investment from, from companies looking to relocate here, it's very important for that first impression to be one that's inviting. And I can tell you that I was instrumental in bringing forth the other roadways about, I believe, about four years ago. So, with that, I'll close the public hearing on item number 31.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2017-167, with the exception of the discussed portion of Bonanza Way.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second motion? Any further discussion? All right, there being no further discussion. Ask for the vote. And we should probably request a roll call at this point.
Supervisor Angus?
With hesitancy, I'm going to vote yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, down to the regular agenda, item number 32. Mr. Walsh approves the Public Outreach and Participation Program for the Proposed Planning and Zoning Automation and Building Fee Schedules, and direct the department to begin the process. Would you like to address the board?
Chairman Watson, members of the board, staff has gone through and prepared a public outreach program here, and with the board's approval, we'd like to implement that plan. Basically, the plan calls for four public meetings. We're looking to hold those meetings in January. There'd be a meeting here in the Kingman area, one in the Bullhead city area, Mojave Valley, Lake Havasu city area, and then one up on the strip. Along with those meetings, we'll be reaching out to the various chambers of commerce and building code, or, I'm sorry, excuse me, chambers of commerce, realtors organizations and builders organizations, and offer to answer any questions they might have, invite them to the public meetings. We will also have a website on the Development Services page with the location. Basically, the website will go through, outline the need for the fee increases, as well as explain the methodology behind it, and then also offer some possible alternatives. But importantly, there'll be a place on that website that they can comment on the fees and give us any feedback that they might have. But basically, all of that, after those four public meetings and any other meetings that we hold with any of the various groups, various stakeholders, we will compile all of that feedback, all the comments, present to both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Building Code Advisory Board, their respective fee increases, bring their recommendations back to the board for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Questions?
How long do you foresee this all taking?
We're anticipating, basically, it's looking like if everything goes as planned, we hold our four meetings in January, and then bring it to the Commission and the Advisory Board in February. There's a 60-day notice period before we would bring it to the board. So, we're hoping to have it before this board on May 7th, and then that would allow for a June 7th implementation.
And I want to thank you for, you know, hitting the restart button on this and doing it the right way, and letting the people that it's going to affect have their say, and taking all of those comments into consideration when you make your final recommendation. So, thank you very much.
You bet.
Any questions from anyone else on the board?
No, I just wanted to say that I also appreciate you taking another look at this, and I am in support of the fees matching what's needed to go forward and make it happen. I'm not in support of our taxpayers paying or supplementing the fees for other people that are needing the permit. So, I'm glad we're trying to make this a little more fair to everybody. So, with that, I'll put that in the form of a motion to approve item number 32.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number 33. As per the discussion, possible action regarding the designation, Public Works Department job classifications of storekeeper, automotive services technician, automotive mechanic, automotive mechanic senior, automotive shop supervisor, equipment services technician, equipment mechanic, welder, equipment and parts coordinator, equipment mechanic senior, welder senior, equipment mechanic lead, equipment shop supervisor, and equipment fleet manager as hot jobs due to the inherent challenges to attract and retrain qualified quality employees in this Fund 2005 Highway User Revenue Fund. And Fund 603 Fleet Services Job Classifications, and further approve an increase to each job classification range by three ranges immediately to give approximately 15.8% salary increase. And approve the placement of position number 1119 Office Specialist at Range 11, Step 7.5, salary of 2209 hourly. Approve the placement of position 1118 Office Assistant Senior at Range 8, Step 4, at salary of 1604 hourly. And approve for the organization redesign salary savings, suspending file filing. Vacant Authorization Position 1012 Welder Senior and Position 200823 Office Assistant for Asset Warranty Management. Until further notice and authorization by the board, whereas said action will incur annual expenses, impact to Fund 205 at $23,469 maximum, and to Fund 603 at $40,363 maximum, while maintaining net positive revenue to expense. Questions for Mr. Lutowski?
I have question and comments. First, my comments. When we first started, and we gave the county the authority to go and designate some jobs hot jobs, I don't think this is what we actually meant it to come out, a way to sort of go back and give raises to people. That really wasn't what, I remember it, I do not think that was the original intent to do this out of the budget and like this. So, you know, we've gone through, and some of them I have agreed with. I think I've actually voted on most of them. But when I come to something like this, and I got the backup, and it showed how other counties or municipalities with that, you know, a lot of our constituents have a problem with the way we do our salaries. And I've learned a lot, and I may have thought some of that when I first started or was even running for office, but I've learned in the years I've worked here that there are some jobs that are just difficult to get people to recruit. They're specialties, they're professional, and you have to pay to get people to either move here or leave the job they're in. I get that. But of all those things, and I really don't mean to be disrespectful, I think to use that for mechanics and people who work on cars, unless there is something intrinsically different than all the vehicles that we use in Mojave County, I think that's really stretching what our intent was for the hot jobs. I'm not even saying that the way you've gone about it and how you factored it and the money saving is not a bad, is not a good thing, it might be. But to do this outside of the budget like this, I think it sends a bad message to all the rest of the employees who want raises as well. You know, I went through all these different positions, and, you know, even office assistants. I don't think that administrative assistants, in the definition that we gave department heads, can really be a hot job. And for that reason, I wish that we would do this inside the budget, not outside, and truly leave hot jobs for what the original intent was. So, I wanted to explain that is why I'll be voting no on that. And I really don't have a question, I just had comments. So, that's all I need to say.
Thank you Supervisor Angus. Comments from other board members? Mr. Hendricks?
Mr. Chairman, I did want to make some clarifications. One of the requests that I made in addressing the hot jobs is that I would have the flexibility to bring those issues to the board when we identified them throughout the year. And I hope I retain that flexibility even after this year's budget process to continue as we determine those positions that actually need to be addressed. Regarding our service departments, you know, one of the things that's critical about service departments is for, it's kind of like the Wizard of Oz and the man behind the curtain. You know, they make everything work. They're incredibly important that, you know, whether it be our IT department, or our mechanics, or whoever, that work behind the scenes to make sure that all of our equipment and our tools and our people are able to go out and meet the public and perform their service. So, it's incredibly important that they're not forgotten. Originally, when Steve brought this proposal to me several months ago, I wasn't prepared to bring it forward before the board. And then with new information, the shop foreman requested a meeting with myself and Steve Lutowski. And with the support that I saw from the certain boards of supervisors, I felt it prudent for me to listen to their proposals, and the proposal that my director, Steve Lutowski, was supporting and believed was necessary to adequately run his department, so we did. The other thing that was important is on his administrative staff, there were actually positions that were eliminated and additional responsibilities that they would be taking on, which allowed us to consider them being included in Steve's proposal for this hot jobs. I also wanted to point out to the board supervisors that this wasn't going to increase the budget, that everything that was being proposed today was within the existing budget that was allotted to Public Works. The proposal was going to be funded through the elimination of positions and through a lessening of fees being charged for assigned vehicles. And that's what I wanted to point out to the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Any...
No, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Supervisor Johnson?
I believe the board, I don't think I supported it, but I believe the board back in April or February of the year, this year, we gave the manager the authority he's talking about, plus if a department can find savings to give those increases, and I don't agree with that, I think it should be done by the board, but we've done that for all the other departments. So, I think it's only, you know, I'm not going to be, you know, saying it's good for one and not good for the other, even though I didn't, you know, support it. And that's why I support it now.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson.
Mr. Hendricks, have we done it for every department? Even elected officials' departments allowed them to go back and do all this outside the budget?
We've, actually, Coral Lloyd, our Finance Director, is reviewing that particular process and see where we've not been able to address certain areas. And, you know, I believe there are some critical areas that we haven't been able to look at that the board has been made aware of recently, that we probably need to. We've addressed recently Treasury, we've addressed recently the Attorney's Office, we've addressed recently the Sheriff's Office, we've addressed recently our Road Department. So, if I went through the list, we've been able to take a look at either through the use of one or more of the templates that the board has approved, not hot jobs, but we've been able to look at a considerable number of areas within the county, which was one of my goals. I thought since the board, we weren't able to identify an additional revenue source for, let's say, a complete class comp study of the whole county, that we could do it individually, if we could do it within the budgets, and do it internally and benefit our employees and the organization. So, I think we've been extremely successful at what the board's allowed me to have the flexibility to move forward with.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think that's why I had the problem with it, Supervisor Angus is bringing up a good point. We have some departments that just don't have the way to cut, to give the pay increases, and then some departments are giving, I think, up to 20% raises, and then some people are getting 3%. And it's basically, while it comes before the board and we vote on it, I don't know that we're looking at the overall picture of the county. And from now, from what I'm kind of getting the feeling, and I'm sure it'll come back, we can have departments come in and say, look, we have, we can't fire anybody or not fill a position, we need money to raise it. And it's gone away without us looking at the whole picture at one time, and it could cause us problems, but I swear your heart today.
Any further questions for Mr. Lutowski?
No, but a comment.
Supervisor Bishop?
Well, maybe a question. These are not being considered hot jobs, is my understanding, right? These are, this is a reorganization, staying within the Public Works budget that's already allocated, is that correct?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop, good question. This represents two initiatives, one specific to the administrative assistance, that is an organizational redesign. There was an approved vacant position, an office assistant, that we have not been able to fill, and as a result of our two very talented office assistants being very well positioned to take on those additional duties, we are requesting board consideration and approval for a salary increase specific to the maintaining the frozen office assistant position. Those salary savings realized from the office assistant position would, in fact, be more than the salary increase that's being proposed for the two office assistants. On the other hand, with regard to the automotive mechanics and the equipment mechanics, yes, we have identified those as hot jobs. They're positions unique to Public Works and the county as a whole. They are service-driven positions. And if I may, with regard to our study of salaries just across Arizona cities and counties, we have found that the automotive mechanics, on average, are compensated 27% less than our peer agencies in Arizona, 23% less for the equipment mechanics. And if the board were to consider and approve this initiative, the adjusted salaries would still fall, on the auto mechanic side, approximately $20,000 less annually than the City of Las Vegas and the City of Henderson and the County of San Bernardino. And the equipment mechanics, about $15,000 annually less than the County of San Bernardino.
Okay, thank you. Ever since I was elected to this position, I've been saying that I would like to see a wage compensation study done countywide. And of course, it's not a good idea to do that now, because if we did that study, I don't think that we could find the revenue to give everybody the pay increases that they need. So, the alternative was to allow different departments to reorganize and give pay raises accordingly if they stayed within their budget. And I see this as another fine example of doing that. And I'm still in the hopes that we can someday have the revenue to where we can do a wage compensation study and compensate our employees adequately. But until then, I think this gets us closer to that point where, when we do do the wage compensation study, that we're not going to be that far off based on these type of reorganizations. That's my thought.
Thank you Supervisor Bishop. Any further questions for Mr. Lutowski? Just want to verify one item before you take off from the podium. I believe when I was looking through all the information, that even though it's 15.8% of an increase, it will still fall generally 10% below the median throughout our peer groups in this vicinity, is that correct?
Yes, Chairman Watson, and I'll just comment here, the, just on the automotive mechanics, the average surveyed salary is currently at $45,000 annually for automotive mechanics. And this initiative would bring our automotive mechanics up to a salary of about $38,000. So, we're looking at a delta of about $8,000 annually, really substantial when you compare it to the neighboring Clark and San Bernardino counties.
Right, I would just refer into the Arizona...
Yes, we'd still be below with the adjustment below our peer agents. We'd still be below with the adjustment, below our peer agencies.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lutowski. Okay. Entertain a motion for item number thirty-three.
I make a motion that we approve item thirty-three as written.
We have a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? There being none, I'll ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Angus?
No.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, on to item number thirty-four. Discussion, possible action regarding the election of the chairman and vice chairman of Mojave County Board of Supervisors, to be effective January one, two thousand and eighteen, for the calendar year of two thousand and eighteen.
Chairman Watson, first of all?
Supervisor Angus?
I can't believe it's been a year since we did this. It's going so fast. And we would usually do our rotation now, I'm the vice chair, and, but in light of some of the more high-profile issues that Chairman Watson's taken a high profile on and has done a very good job, thank you very much, for talking about the water issues and some of the natural resource issues, I am going to make a motion that we keep things the way they are. And I'm happy with that, to have you as the chairman, and I'll say the vice chair if it's the will of the board. I think that will be good for this board and for the sake of continuity on our higher-profile issues.
Thank you. Motion?
That's the motion, to keep things status quo.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second, and thank you for your comments. Again, let's have a roll call vote.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
I'll abstain.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yes, thank you, and thank you very much for your vote of confidence.
Got it. Motion to adjourn? Second.
Meeting adjourned.